Thank you, Mr. Leinbarger. Good afternoon. I hereby call this special meeting of the Nacogdoches ISD Board of Trustees by video conference to order. A quorum of board members is present. Please indicate by saying here when I call your name. Vice President James Matoya. Secretary Mindy Winslow.
Here.
Lea Bethat. The Reverend James Irvin. The records show that he is not with us at the moment, but may join us here shortly. Dr. Tyrell Gromon.
Here.
And Mr. Farshid Niramand. Thank you. On March 16th, Governor Greg Abbott granted a request by Attorney General Ken Paxton to temporarily suspend a limited number of open meetings laws to the extent necessary to allow for telephone or video conference meetings in response to the coronavirus. In accordance with those suspended rules, we certify the following. Notice of this meeting has been posted online for at least 72 hours. Although members of the board are not gathered in a central physical location, we do have a quorum in attendance at this meeting by video conference. We are meeting by use of Zoom software application, which allows two-way communication for members of the public. As we would at any in-person meeting, members of the public who follow the instructions on the meeting notice for registering to speak during the public comment portion will be unmuted for three minutes to speak. If you would like to provide comment at a future meeting conducted by video conference, please follow the instructions on the meeting notice. All other meeting procedures will adhere to board adopted procedures to the extent practical. An audio recording of this meeting is being made and will be made available to the public at a later date. This Zoom software application allows for people to view and interact. We apologize in advance for any unforeseeable technical difficulties that we may experience, and we ask you to be patient. If you have questions about these suspended laws, please contact the Office of the Attorney General at 888-672-6787, or by email at TOMA@OAG.Texas.gov. Dr. Trujillo, I have not received any word that we have any public comment today. Is that what you also are understanding there at the District Support Center?
Yes, ma'am. I don't show any public comment.
All right. Thank you. So that will take us straight into our workshop, Facilities and Construction update. And Dr. Trujillo, I'm going to kick the floor to you, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much for mentioning the board. Today, to kind of wrap our hands around the tremendous work that has happened in the last few months, our team and the school district felt the need to come together to kind of go through the projects that we have, answer some of the questions. Back on November 21st, 2019, my predecessor, Alton Fraley, did something very innovative and shared something with the board at that time. And if you would recall, he used the words, "Plan for the worst and hope for the best." And when I watched that board meeting, there is no way that Alton Fraley knew anything about COVID-19 and the things that were to come. So that brings a whole new set of lights whenever I heard him say to the board and to the community, "Plan for the worst and hope for the best."
Yeah, he stopped for a minute. Did you not hear from him last night on the way home?
Les, I think we're hearing that voice again.
Yes, we are.
One of the things that I wanted to share was the infinite wisdom that the board and Alton Fraley, my predecessor, did during that board meeting. And that is create a capstone of projects and package everything together. And the amazing thing that was able to accomplish with that was able to address some things that could have really been detrimental with cost escalation or even construction inflation as we go through this whole process. He talked about the big rocks, taking care of the three big rocks as we move forward, and then we have the little rocks. But we also want to make sure we address the little rocks because we're getting to a point that the big rocks are kind of settling in, and they're looking really good. And we want to make sure that we pay homage to what were those little rocks and what does it look like as we proceed with the bond. And we're looking at the direction that we'll be going as a distance in the next few months. So I've asked Mr. Martin to kind of give us a snapshot. And Ms. Barbrick will be also addressing some of the budgetary items that we have and what that looks like. But we've also invited some other folks. Mr. Bland is here with us from PBK, and we also have Mr. Curtis with us and Mr. LaRue. So any of the questions we can as we go through this, so we can address project by project, and we'll leave a little more informed or a lot more informed than we are at this time as far as where we are with our bond, construction, and renovations that are going on. So once again, Ms. Fitch, thank you for this opportunity for the board to come with us. Mr. Martin, I'm going to turn it over to you, sir, if you'll navigate that with our
Thank you, Dr. Trejo. President Fitch, Board of Trustees, I want to wish you good afternoon and talk a little bit about updates on our bond projects. As you all recall, in 2018, in November, the community voted in a $77,995,000 bond for the school district to do some major projects as well as some priority maintenance on our existing facilities. A lot of work has taken place since that bond was passed. And as Dr. Trejo mentioned, Mr. Fraley, interim superintendent at the time, at the November 21st, 2019 board meeting, we separated projects, calling our capstone projects being the new Carpenter Elementary rebuild, the CTE Center, and the McMichael addition. We call those our capstone projects or our big rocks. So we're mainly going to be focusing on some of those today. And also making, and we're not asking, want to make sure that everyone knows that the board, we're not asking the board to approve anything today. This is simply a workshop. We will take this information to the Seabrick for their review as well, once we have shared some of this information with the board today. So I'll begin by just explaining what we've done. A lot of our projects are, as you know, the Transportation Center is about 99% complete. The new District Support Center is about 58% complete with an expected move-in date of December 22nd. Then we moved to our Carpenter site. That project began on March 11, 2020, and is expected to be completed on July 28, 2021. The project days is about 361 days on that project, and right now it's about 28% completed. McMichael additions, it started on May 19, 2020, and it should be completed by November 15, 2021. It's a 390-day project. It's about 27% complete. And then the Nacogdoches High School CTE addition started on May 11, 2020, is expected to be completed on April 28, 2021. Right now, it's about 25% completed. Another thing that we have, we've done here recently, and I think we sent some correspondence out to you all, is we've updated our website to reflect the plans and the accomplishments, the major milestones that have happened along the way as the construction projects have gone on. If you had not had a chance, you can reach it by going to our homepage and click, there's two button, radio buttons there. If you click on the second radio button, you'll be able to see all of the plans. You'll be able to see everything from the full plans to the conceptual drawings of each of these projects, the major projects. So I want to shout out to Les Leinbarger, Michelle St. John, and Marge Jerome for getting a lot of that information together, as well as Holly Anderson for putting a lot of that information together. They've done a superb job of giving us a good picture of what our projects look like at this point in time. At this time, Madam President, if I may, I want to turn it over to Ms. Barbrick to take a look at the, at where we are, a snapshot of where we are if we were to end these projects today. Ms. Bar brick?
Good afternoon, President Fitch, board members, Dr. Trujillo. I would like to share a spreadsheet with you that will, I'll go through line by line explaining where we are with each project. Oh. And I would request, Mr. Leinbarger, can you give me permission?
Yes. Hold on just a moment.
By the way, President Fitch, Reverend Irvin is with us. He came on right after we moved into the first introduction.
Okay. So you know.
Lisa, you're a co-host now. You should be able to share.
Are you seeing a spreadsheet?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right. All right. So this spreadsheet has been prepared, assuming that any unfinished project that did not go out to bid will match their budget amount. So, you know, no guarantees for the future, but for this purposes of this spreadsheet, there's no gain, there's no loss on any unbid project. So the way this spreadsheet works, this column right here is our projects. And this was how they were sold in the bond. And if you go down to the bottom here, there's our total amount, $77,995,000. So this very first line here is our Carpenter land purchase. And the bond budget, we budgeted $1.5 million. We spent $897,000, and we are under budget by $642,595. So that's how each line item works. But there is this piece right here that I've highlighted is our three capstone projects. So you have to look at those together to see our budget. So all together, so we've got our Carpenter rebuild, Carpenter soft costs, the McMichael addition, as well as its soft cost, the McMichael HVAC project, and the CTE Center at the high school. All three of these projects together equal $52,793,964. These are the, this is the amount that we went out for bid. Excuse me. Yes, this was the amount that the bid brought in. And they total $49,754,158. And then again, as I mentioned earlier, these are soft costs. They did not go out to bid. So we're assuming no over or under budget. So looking at all of these projects together, we are over budget by $5,33,251. Going on to the next line item is our Burke Center purchase. We bought the building for $800,000. Now this, my understanding was that the, these were all one in the same, but we have a disagreement there, and that's, that's fine. I presented it as two separate projects. So since the Burke Center purchase is not in the bond budget, I'm showing that we overspent by $800,000. But on the Burke Center construction, we budgeted $2.8 million. It was bid out for $1.7 million for a savings of $1.1 million. The soft costs are, I'm showing, go ahead.
So really, if we, if we put the purchase, the land acquisition purchase in there, then we're still, we're still.
Under budget.
Budget. That's correct. All right. The bottom line is what's going to be important.
Yes, yes. So here, the soft costs, they're at no savings, no over budget. Transportation, we budgeted $4.2 million. The bid amount was $2.7 million for a savings of $1.4 million. Again, the soft costs, zero. Here is our press box renovation construction. We budgeted $1.1 million, and that is the one that we've called as paused. So I'm showing a savings in this particular spreadsheet of $1.1 million. As well as the soft costs, we budgeted $246,000. There were some preliminary expenses associated with it. So we've got a savings of $174,000. So I'd like, I'm just going to, if we haven't touched, if, if a project hasn't been started yet, I'm going to skip over it, such as these two. We're showing zero, so no change there. The Field House HVAC Priority Maintenance, we have a savings of $78,000. The Mike Moses Classroom HVAC project, we have a savings of $119,000. This one right here, the McMichael Restroom Concession Stand, I'm showing, this has not been started, it's paused, but I'm still showing it as a $500,000 loss.
Ms. Barbrick, if I may jump in there?
Yes.
Board, on the 19th, or excuse me, on the 21st of November, when the board voted on the Big Rock projects or the capstone projects, one thing that wasn't, was not included in that bid was the restroom concession stands at McMichael Middle School. That was something that we had talked about, and we had initially wanted in the bond because we had porta potties out there on our campus. But when the, at the time that the board voted, this was not included as part of the overall package. So we're taking that back to the Seabrick for recommendation, and then we'll be bringing it back to the board should everybody agree for approval to go out to bid and add the restrooms out at the McMichael facilities. Thank you, Ms. Bar brick.
Yes. You're welcome. All right. The next project is our Reggae HVAC Priority Maintenance. We have a savings of $124,000. The Reggae Water Supply, we have a savings of $4,700. The TJR Kitchen Plumbing and Water Supply, we have a savings of $21,875. The TJR Theater Project, $69,700 savings. The TJR HVAC Priority Maintenance, we have a loss of $315,000. And come down to the subtotal of, we are over budget by $1.6 million. We have some costs for bond coordination of $10,800. And then I've added in the interest earned as of October 31st, which brings us to that we are under budget by $131,260. Now, this has a lot of assumptions in this. I want to make sure that you understand that, that there are a lot of assumptions, that future projects are coming in as budgeted. But based on what we're seeing, you know, that, that probably is not likely, but we have some options that we can consider, look at, bring to the Seabrick to look at. I don't know if you want to look at this a little bit longer, or if we want to look at some of our options.
Can I ask a question?
You sure can.
When you go back up there and you said we were the $5 million that we were over budget and $5 million?
Yes.
$1,333,000. How does that fit into the savings? And is that equivalent to the savings that we have? I guess that $5 million is that we're over budget on that. How are we going to?
Right. When you, when you add up all of the, the savings that we realized, as well as our over budget here, we end up altogether at a loss of $1.6 million. That includes that $5 million.
Okay, okay.
And then we. Thank goodness, thank goodness for the interest.
But we have a lot of tough decisions to make that we need to bring to our Seabrick meeting, and we want you to be aware of that as well.
So I'm kind of, it's kind of interesting, though. I know Mr. Martin had just said, hey, we're still looking at doing these restrooms over here. We may be bringing that back to you. But in reality, I'm not seeing, we're flush with money to be able to go back and reconsider that question.
Right. We, that's why we need to look at our options on other potential savings. And if, if I allowed, I'd like to move on to that.
Okay.
All right.
Can you have, do you have Rick with us, Bland?
Yes, he's with us.
Yes, sir. I'm on the phone.
What I'd like to do is, we want to talk specifically about the capstone projects. Because remember that, if we go back up to the capstone projects that are there, what can you tell us about the capstone projects, Rick? Are we, are we in line? Are we in budget? What, what can you tell us that you know?
Yes, sir. Thank you for that question. So from the GMP that was signed, we are actually, we're in budget still, and we're actually starting to see some savings within our contingencies that we have within the projects. Now, we are early, so we have contingency set aside for reasons, meaning when we get into Nacogdoches High School CTE area, McMichael's also is a renovation-type project, we need contingencies. But at this point, our contingencies are going up, so we're seeing savings. Now, it's a little bit early for us to say that we would end up, end all three projects with a savings on contingency. But our goal is to try and fund, if you remember, all three projects were rolled into one GMP. So as we have savings, we could do things like fund the restroom concession building at McMichael's. Our target at this point is to fund that restroom building without going outside of the additional GMP that was signed.
But understanding the GMP was already over, hmm, all right.
Yes, yes, ma'am. The GM, I'm talking about the day the GMP was signed. WRL has a GMP, and they have a contract. From that point forward, we are seeing some savings within our contingencies. Now, it was still over budget at that point, but when I move forward from WRL's contract date is what I'm referring to.
Right. My concern there, and, and, you know, I'd be interested in hearing Seabrick and board members' input on this, is my concern is, we still have a lot of projects to go. And, you know, as Lisa said, we don't know how those are going to hit. So it's, it's, we need to save every penny we can and try to make sure that we hit all these other areas as well.
Yes, ma'am. And within the three project, the three capstone projects, that's exactly what we're doing as we're monitoring these contingencies that were set aside for, for unknowns or things that have to happen during construction. So at this point, we're headed in the right direction for savings, and, and then the administration and board can decide how those savings are used.
President Fitch, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm with you. I'm very reserved about that kind of money for a bathroom for a facility that does not have large amount of use. And I think being reserved about delaying that until we know our financial situation down the road is a good idea. I think that's, I certainly agree with you.
President Fitch, are you there?
I am here. I'm not sure if it's going back to Lisa, if it's going back to Michael, or who's, I guess it's going back to Lisa for the options.
Okay. I'll do that. So on this spreadsheet, it's, it's just a little bit different way to look at it. Here are our projects that are over budget, and they add up to $6.6 million. Here are completed projects that had savings, and I just continue a subtotalling of our, bringing down our deficit. We have our interest. And right here, this, right here, this local, local capital projects fund, I started this past year. We had some unused transfers that were budgeted, and I stashed them away in what's called a local capitals project fund with the intention of building this up as we go and using them for any projects that may end up, wouldn't otherwise not be done through the bond. So last year, I put in $96,000. That brings us down to $3.6 million. Some other options are, our fund balance grew again this year, and that's something we can look at or not, but we could move the Burke Center purchase as well as this $10,800 charge to the general fund, which would free up $800,000, over $800,000. We can officially pull the plug on the press box and then McMichael concession stand. That would bring us down some more. We could reduce our footprint by selling the, the Deaf Ed building and the Student Support Services building once they move out. So right now, we have a project to, on the Deaf Ed building to, I believe it's replace the roof and their HVAC. And if we sell it, then we wouldn't have to do that. And I, I just put unknown. I don't know how much those buildings might sell for, the Carpenter and the Nettie side as well. Here are, these savings have not been applied, or these are the savings from the nearly completed projects, Transportation and Burke Center. So here, because I've used some things that were not on the other spreadsheet, we're actually at a surplus of $1.6 million. Some other things we can do is we can scale down the.
Yeah, I'm having trouble correlating this sheet with the, with the sheet that you just
Well, this has other savings, other ideas.
Okay. Well, I, and I, and, but if we go back to the other sheet with everything built in as we know it now, we were go- going down to the bottom line of, we, we were okay because of the interest.
Yes.
So how do we go from that to, on your option sheet, up at the top, being, before you look at the options, scroll back up just a little bit. I keep wanting to move it myself.
Okay.
Um, how do we go from that to being $6 million in the hole?
No, this is only, this right here are the projects that we know have gone over budget.
Okay.
These are the projects that we know have gone under budget.
Okay. So really, right now, we stand $5 million over budget.
Right. Just based on projects only, no interest.
And the, and the number, and the number from the sheet on the front, go back to it real quick, sheet two, where you show, oh, sheet, I think you just-
I think I-
Yeah, moved it, yeah.
There we go.
If you, yeah, scroll down just a little bit there, before the interest, let me see what that number is, it shows a million dollars. So how are we, I'm, I'm having trouble correlating that in my head, understanding where, where that, that's-
All right. So if we look at here, here are some that are over budget.
That's where they're way over budget, right?
The Burke Center.
Now, and I'll say this on the Burke Center thing, you know, Lisa, when we approved the purchase of that land, there was discussion at that board meeting, if we went back and looked, and said that while we're buying it out of general fund right now, because the bonds hadn't been sold, we were to reimburse it. That was supposed to come out of a bond.
Yes, it was. I mean, that, that's how I understood it.
Yes, that's absolutely how the board understood it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But as I mentioned, an option, because we can afford it, is move it to the general fund, which would free up $800,000.
Dr. Grom and Ms. Barbrick, what about the demolition of the Martin Center safely? What, where does that figure in all this plan? Where are those, where is that money gonna come from?
That is the bond. We have budgeted $316,000. I'm showing, since we have not gone out to bid, I'm showing there's no savings, there's no over or under budget here.
Okay.
Scroll back, yeah, scroll back down.
Ms. Barbrick?
Yes.
James Irvin here. Am I understanding correctly that there, there are potential savings as we go forward with the other projects that are, that are either, either, that are not completed or that we haven't started yet?
There are potential savings, there are potential over budget.
So it could go either way.
It could go either way.
Yeah, you know, what she said earlier was, based on our performance already, we can't, you know, we can't expect those to fall within budget. And I agree with that assessment. I'm a little concerned that we're, if you go back over to that, you know, the first page is not alarming to me, but when you hit that second page and it shows that we're $5 million over budget, and we still have a long way to go, that's very, very alarming to me. I don't know how, all of a sudden, we got that out of control.
No, you, you've got to keep going down.
Okay.
So.
You're right. If you put the interest in there, right.
Interest in there. This was not reflected on the other page.
Right.
This was not reflected on the other page, moving that 800,000.
Right. Well, and I, and I'm, and I'm hesitant to do that at this point, because again, it was always our intent to fund that out of the bond. And what I'm trying to do, my perception is staying true to what we told the community we would do. And, and right now, even with the interest, and yeah, we've got a little extra $100,000 that we've pigeonned over there that seems like it would need to come to the board for approval to move it over there.
Yes.
But we're still, okay, even with those things, we're still 3.6 in the hole, before we look at any of the other options.
Well, we just, that's- Right, that's right. That's if, that is if we ended up and we did the drag, dragon press box.
Right. And that's what I'm, and that's what I'm saying, is saying true to the intent of the bond.
Yes.
And true to the intent of the bond means we told the community we were gonna do the press box, we told them, you know. And so my goal is to try to stay as true to what this community voted on as possible. And, and how do we get there and stay on budget?
Well, the Burke Center purchase, we remain true by purchasing it, but if we move it to the general fund, we're still, we're still doing what we promised, but we freed up money for future use. Another way you can look at that is rather than moving the Burke Center purchase over into general fund, we can take 800,000 and sock it away in that capital, local capital projects fund.
You know, how did, how did we miss the number so greatly, would be a question, too. I mean, I know we had committees and, and the contractors and all these people working on how much it would cost. I think, I think PBK was involved in that at the beginning. This is, this is how much it's gonna cost to do these things. How did we miss the mark so much?
I can pass that on to Michael Martin for that.
I have a question before you, Ms. Barbrick.
Okay.
You had a section there on the second page about the buildings with that we presently own, and if we were to sell those, we could utilize that, that money, right?
Yes.
Do we have an idea of how much these buildings would be worth and how much, and how soon we would be able to sell them?
No, we, I don't have any idea how much they would be worth, and we couldn't sell them until those people, those departments moved out.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Is it the plan to move deaf ed and student support center and all of that into where, the Burke Center?
No, it'd become here.
They'd be coming here.
Ms. Fitch?
Yes.
Just a question, nevermind. Improvement of a baseball and softball facility had any influence on a shortage?
No, we did that out of, we did that out of fund balance.
That's right.
Right. President Fitch, if I may, address your, your question, or attempt to address your question. Back on the 21st, I go back to that board meeting of which the board approved these three larger projects. I don't know if you all recall, but at your places, you had a, a, a item in your folder, which was a spreadsheet, and in, in that spreadsheet, what it showed was that combining these three projects, even at that time, there was going to be a deficit of $4,740,000. And from my understanding, the intent of, of combining them was to get them, was to leverage the economy to scale for a more favorable bidding environment with the bundle projects together. I'll ask Mr. Bland to, to speak to that, because he spoke to it that night in November. Mr. Bland, are you there?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Martin. Yes, so at that night, when, when it was, the GMP was signed, we were currently 4.7 and some change over the original bond allocation. So it's important to note, moving forward, we're doing better, so we, we will have some savings. But working backwards, how did we get there? Well, you know, we talked that night about steel tariffs, we talked that night about inflation that was much, much higher than anybody could predict. There were also some code requirements for storm shelters. The storm shelter, the code that required storm shelters changed from even after the, the bond, the successful bond referendum. The city changed the code to a, to a more updated code that required storm shelters. That was not within the bond program. A few classrooms were added, also in McMichael, as it went through the additional programming later on to add, add additional classrooms. So with that, and with the steel tariffs, with the runaway inflation that we saw at that time, which is going in the opposite direction now because of COVID, we estimated somewhere around $5 million was, was a hit to the project that couldn't have been known during bomb planning.
Well, I will say, Mr. Bland, that I'm, I'm deeply disappointed that the target was missed by this much. I mean, I understand, I'm, I'm a business person, I understand that whenever you get into construction, you, you have unexpected cost, you build in contingencies, I understand all that. But to miss the mark this far is, and, and I said it back in, I think it was November in that meeting. It's deeply concerning to me, and it, it remains deeply concerning to me. You know, that night, you kept saying, oh, we're gonna have a whole bunch of savings because we're doing it this way. Well, you know, we're, we're not realizing any of those.
Yes, ma'am, I understand, I understand that.
I, I would have to second what Ms. Fitch just said. I mean, we were kind of feeling like we would go ahead and take this risk, and that's why we went that direction. So what I'm scared of now is what would it have been if we hadn't have? It is disappointing to see that, because I promised our community, and this is, this is certainly not what I expected. That's just me.
All right, where do we go from here, guys? Are you finished with the options, Ms. Barbrick, or do you have still more to go on that?
We went through down just those different options. We end up with a surplus of 1.6 million. But again, that's, that's the, you know, that's if we did everything. I just wanted to show you, just give you a glimpse of what our fund balance looks like, so that you can see that we have some options there. Our fund balance, I am projecting will grow by 4.5 million.
And, and let me, and let me say this, Ms. Barbrick, I, I appreciate you, and, and we have seen that fund balance grow greatly, and, and, and thank goodness for that. What a blessing, because we do have a bit of a cushion there.
Yes.
But I, I, the point I want to make is, is a larger global point of, when we go to the community and tell them, we're gonna, we want you to approve this bond for X amount of dollars, and this is what we're gonna deliver for that, then we need to be able to do that.
I agree, and that's why I'm have these options out there, so that we can meet every single one of them.
But we're not meeting them under the terms. We never said, hey, give us, give us $80 million, and then we'll pull some money from fund and be able to do this. You know, we said, if you, if you vote and support this, we can, we can accomplish this. So that's, that's kind of where, you know, it's just rubbing me a little bit.
Okay.
Obviously, at some point, we're gonna have to look at doing a transfer from fund balance to complete these projects, but, you know, I just feel like it shouldn't be that way.
Well, I, I agree.
I'm not saying that to you personally. Yeah, I'm just saying it-
I agree with, I agree with you as well, but I also want to have a plan.
I totally agree, but I, I echo what Pam said, that when we did this, we were under the impression we'd be able to take care of all of this with the money that we were gonna get from, that, that we put out. But the community, and we also told them we'd deal with the money that we were gonna get. And I'm glad that we have an option to be able to make it up, but that doesn't make it feel good that, that, that we said we were gonna deal with the money that we were gonna get on, and, and we're not gonna be able to do it.
And I, I think it comes back to the original, who, be it PBK or whoever did the original estimations, obviously missed the mark.
Ms. Fitch?
Yes, sir.
I do want to point out as a board that we did approve a budget on this, on these projects that was $5 million over.
It wasn't showing $5 million that night, sir.
What, what was it showing? Because I recall that-
I would have to go back and look at my notes. I believe it was, it was less than that, and we had anticipated cost savings, or if you'll remember the discussion off the transportation building, and, you know, potentially some other areas. And, and we have seen some cost savings there, they're not as great as we expected because some additional costs came in afterwards.
Correct.
But this, this 5 million is, is a much higher number than we have seen before.
Right. I, I just recall hearing that number of 5 million. But at the same token, I think our priority has gotta be to keep our word to the community as it relates to these projects.
I agree.
We said, this is what we were gonna do, and I think, you know, we, we need to look at it and maybe revisit it with our contractors and see how we can get these savings that were virtually almost guaranteed that we would get, you know, if we move forward by packages, packaging these projects together instead of doing it individually. So I, I, that's, that's kind of where I think, you know, maybe we, you know, we need to look at that, because they almost just guaranteed, hey, we're gonna get this done, and we're gonna get all of this money in savings.
Right.
I do understand that some things have occurred, but, um, you know, that, that, we've got to make, think of some other options as well.
Agreed.
Even from there.
Right.
This is Dr. Grom and Reverend Irvin, thank you so much for speaking up. I certainly agree with all the others that integrity is very important, and I think reservation should be our, our stance right now, because we never know what other expenses are gonna come up in an unexpected future. And if we have to, we don't know what COVID's gonna do, and if we have to shut down the schools or whatever, whatever other emergency, we need to try to do what we can to preserve our integrity and proceed with reservation. That's the way I say things.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments?
I think it's sentimental to the board that we stay within what we budgeted while we-
Well, just other, I think as a board, we've, we've got some serious discussions we need to have now, especially as we consider how we're gonna go forward. Because now it looks like we're walking forward in the blind.
Yeah. And has, and that brings up an interesting question. I'm gonna co-tell there, Reverend. My understanding was, you've presented all this information to Seabrick as well. What feedback did they have?
No, we have not. We wanted to present to you first.
Okay.
Yes, we've, we've not presented this informa- this point in time. Our intent is to present all of this information and to possibly get some recommendations from the Seabrick to bring to the board.
Well, let me clarify with that. Seabrick, what we're working with now is to confirm that we do what we said we're going to do.
Right.
Seabrick is not going to advise us as far as budgetary. They're just gonna hold us accountable to what we've committed to, and I've heard President Fitch say it a couple of times is, and it goes back to an additional document that I've reviewed a few times that spells out each one of. It's the projected 2018 total, totals for identified projects. Document that goes through there, and it goes down to estimation of $77,995. And then that there's a line item of items that Seabrick is going to, in dialogue with us, to see what and how far with fidelity did we meet the needs of what we said we were going to do. And one of the items that's on there that was put on hold is the press box. And that's the one that I, I keep wondering about, because that is the small rock that wasn't even put into the container. And I've had a couple of conversations with PBK, and we could do a facelift, or we could do a full-fledged, and the commitment was $1.4 million for the press box. There are a number of items that are on this list that I'm looking at that have been done by PBK, or we had Army work with it to, in conjunction to the project. The Emily Carpenter, once again, Mr. Martin, can you give us a percentage of how much is complete?
Emily Carpenter, I believe, was 28% complete.
28% complete?
Yes, sir.
Rick, are you still there?
Yes, I am, sir.
Okay, with that percentage that he's giving us, are we still scheduled to be within or under budget?
Currently, we're showing under budget for all three of those projects.
Okay, so we're saying that the CTE building, based on the commitment, and I'm looking back at this one document here, $12.1 million for the CTE, and what's the percentage?
25% today.
Are you forecasting that to be at or below budget as well for the CTE?
Yes, sir. Currently, we are still under budget for that project. And when I say under budget, I'm referring to after the GMP was issued.
Okay, and we've got the, what's the percentage there again? I didn't write that.
27%.
27%.
27%.
And once again, Mr. Bland, you're saying we are at or below budget?
Below budget on that one as well.
Okay, so when we're looking at that, now, I know we hadn't heard from Army or from Ralph. We had a number of projects that they're working on. Mr. Martin, were you going to have them speak on some of those projects as well?
Yes, sir, we can.
Because that's, that's a good chunk of the bond for priority maintenance items that have been identified. And some of those, a lot of those projects have been completed. True?
True.
Many of them, many of them, I believe, at a cost savings, correct?
Exactly, that's why. And when we're looking at these numbers, what Ms. Barbrick is giving us is worst-case scenario when we're looking at the budget.
Sure.
But we need to look at the fact that we do have some items that are in that list that are there that may come up at a cost savings. And that's why I appreciate the fact that she's given us an option of, of where we can make up the shortcomings, if there's some shortcomings.
Absolutely, I agree with that. And I want to compliment Army. I don't know if he's with us today, but I mean, now, now that's, I think, a stellar example of staying within budget and bringing most everything in under budget. So I know it's possible because he has, he has been consistent in doing that.
Madam President, if I may, Mr. Curtis is with us today. Mr. Curtis, you want to comment on some of the other projects that transportation, the DSC, and some of the other priority maintenance projects that you and Mr. LaRue have been working on?
Sure. Afternoon, everybody. The transportation facility is, we're pretty much completed with it. We're just going through the final closeout document phase on it. We are making up a final project cost sheet for that, for that project. And I would expect to see it very close to what you're seeing right now on this spreadsheet. DSC, similarly, I don't expect to be over our, our total project budget, and I expect to see a savings coming back on that one, too. We've got the furniture ordered for that project, and I, except for maybe a couple of small things that we're still grappling with in the field, I don't expect any other, any other cost to be coming back. As far as the other projects are concerned, you know, we have started design work on Fedonia, BQJ, Moses, and, you know, we're trying to get a couple of those bid packages ready right now where we can start to see where we land in this current bidding environment. But, you know, we're diligently trying to stay within budget on those as well, of course.
Of course, and let me ask a couple of questions with that. I mean, you're, so you're getting ready to go out to bid, so we should know in relatively short order how those stand, and if we've got any cost savings or overruns there. Is that correct? What would your timeline estimate be on that?
Yeah, I mean, to some degree, we, Fedonia, for example, we are dividing up into two phases. The first phase is just the driveway addition, for the most part. And a lot of that is dependent on overall schedule for the bond as to when Fedonia could be ready to transition to a pre-K. You know, there has to be a big shuffle here that's in coordination with the Moses project and the Carpenter project. I mean, the McMichael project, too. So that's driving our schedule on that. But the BQJ HVAC project, you know, that will be most of the scope that is, is going to be done. So we'll have a very good idea of where that project comes in. We expect to be able to bring these bids to the board at the January board meeting. That's our goal at the moment.
All right.
The Fedonia driveway, the BQJ HVAC, and the Moses roof, and Phase 3 of its HVAC. We expect to bring to the January meeting.
So you're going to try to do roof and HVAC at Moses over the summer?
Yes, that's correct.
Both of those? Okay. Army, I would be really interested in hearing your, your thoughts, too, on, on the press box. I know it's kind of been one that's hanging out there. Is, is that something that you, in your experience and knowledge and expertise, see that we could accomplish for the budgeted amount?
Well, I, I think it depends how, how you view the program of a project like that. The, the facts of the matter was that the, that project was tried to be bid and was, was over budget, so.
Yeah, but it was like over a million dollars over budget, correct?
Right, right, and so whether or not the programming was, was too ambitious or, you know, just conditions of trying to work around that stadium are difficult or expensive to do. If you're going to bring it within the budget that is stipulated in the bond, then some other kind of redesign is going to have to happen, or another, other expectations are going to have to be had.
Right, I know I had a few people tell me that they thought that the initial concept was over, overdesigned. Would you, and that's why it went so far over budget?
Could I jump in? Can I jump in just a little bit? This is Ralph.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think the Field House was, was certainly overdesigned, and that's an issue. We could go in and do a facelift and do some other things and still have a pretty substantial savings. I want to back up just a minute for these projects, which we'll be bringing to you in January. Yes, the BQJ project will be pretty much in its entirety, we hope. But the Mike Moses project and the Fedonia will, will drag out over two summers. So we will, we will know where we stand. I think at Fedonia, we'll have a better idea, because this summer's project will be the roadway, which is going to be the most aggressive and expensive. And I just want to take a brief moment, I know this is a lot we're doing here. Take a brief moment and thank our local team, which is Army, Cindy, and myself. You know, Cindy took over the district support center project and the transportation project at the end, leaving me to concentrate on, on those big rocks. Anyways, I can't say enough about the team.
Well, we appreciate y'all's work, that's for sure.
President Fitch, can I ask, let's see, Rick can speak on the, on the press box? I'm curious, because I'm not here to actually put out there, but we asked for, we went to the public and said it would cost $1.4 million approximately. Rick, can you tell us what happened? So much more.
I'm sorry, you cut out on the last part of your, your question.
What, what caused it to come back so much more high than what we had put on here as 1.4 million for the press box?
You know, the, the, the design of the press box was a total redo, so take it down and start over and try and leave as much of the bleachers intact as possible. As Ralph and Army both have just suggested, we could go back and do more of a facelift and refresh finishes and work on the interior without, the issue is going to be triggering code and triggering current ADA accessibility to the press box. We believe we could do that by changing the program and changing the approach.
Because there comes a certain point of the renovation that we would have to be ADA compliant and probably have to put an elevator there.
That's exactly right. Depending on how, how far we go on redoing finishes and what we do on the inside of the press box. Yes, sir.
And then now that has implications with other athletic venues that are out there. If we're doing this for the boys' football field, then we will have to make sure that we have compliance with ADA with our young ladies as well. So we want to be mindful of what we committed to the community when it comes to that, but I'm looking at $1.4 million as what was initially put in the, and I think I've watched her reference this document, and I appreciate her tremendously because what she's doing is holding us accountable to what we had communicated to the community. And in there, it says a new press box, which means there's no way we could get a new press box with $1.4 million is what I'm hearing, hearing being said, and supported both by Army and Ralph and also Rick, correct?
Well, I don't know, but that's, I hear Rick saying that. Army, do you agree?
It's hard, it's hard to put that in a definitive term right now. If, if the elevator has to be put in, and it really doesn't take much to trigger that as you're trying to renovate that thing. If you're trying to expand it especially, and I think that's, in the programming aspects, that's a major factor that, that starts to generate the cost. But, you know, the elevator can't be understated, because that's, that's a huge element in, in, in the programming of that, of that facility. So, you know, it could take, maybe some things are not, are approached a little differently from a design standpoint. But I, I would think you'd, you'd have to scale back and see at what point is the elevator triggered, and is that suffice to what was promised as part of the bond? You know, where you still have a renovated press box, and maybe it's slightly even expanded upon, but where, you know, to find that trigger point of when the elevator gets, gets to be a requirement.
Ms. Fitch?
Yes, sir.
My, I have a question, as, and I don't recall us as a board submitting the 1.4 million for the press box. Where did that number come from?
Weird, that's a great question. Mr. Martin, where did the bond numbers come from? I always, I was under the working impression that it was administration working with PBK to come up with these estimates, but I don't, is that accurate or not accurate?
That's fairly accurate. Yes, ma'am. The administration worked with PBK to come up with the, the numbers for the proposed bond. And the 1.4 comes from what is, what is within the bond proposed for the press box. That is the number.
So is that what they estimated that they could build a new press box for?
In 2000?
That's the number they gave us?
Yes, sir.
Well, shouldn't they be held accountable instead of us having to redesign it or scale back? I mean, if they said they could do it for that number, then, I don't know. Maybe, maybe I'm missing something. I'm sorry.
That's kind of my, that's kind of the rub I'm having, too, Reverend. I'm right with you.
I can appreciate that question. I'm looking, the document that I'm looking at here, once again, it goes back to August 9, 2018. It says committee recommendation. I don't know who that committee is. And that's what, and I think that's what addresses that question, Reverend.
Can I, can I come, this is Rick Bland. Can I comment on that, the number about the press box? That number was, that number was an estimate that was identified prior to programming, prior to a design of a press box. It was not a construction number as far as coming from a contractor. So this was, this was an estimate as a target before a design was achieved.
Am I correct that you all took a soil sample for that?
Repeat the question, please?
I said, am I correct that there was a time that we all took a soil sample?
Yes, Terricon came out and did core drillings.
I guess my question is, if you estimated a 1.4 million without really having the construction in front of you or the plans for it, I mean, that's, that's a question I have. How did you manage to come up with 1.4 million if you had more? No way of figuring out what it was.
Yes, sir, these are, these are target, these are target estimates in the early stages of just doing desktop, desktop estimates, not knowing, someone just asked the question about geotechnical and coring. Also not knowing footing sizes, or not knowing what's below, what's below an unknown condition. So there's a lot that goes into the design after this point, and quite frankly, it was a missed, it was a missed budget by the final design.
This is Dr. Gromen. I'm certainly on board with what the Reverend and President Fitch are talking about. But first, on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank all the people who have put their perspiration and their, their efforts into doing what you've done for us so far with Mr. Bland, Mr. Curtis, and especially Cindy Robertson and Ralph LaRue. We couldn't be where we are without you, and we thank you for that. Something that comes to my mind is that if we manipulated with the stands to any degree at all, that that would then trigger us having to replace all the stands on that side. Is that correct?
It would be severe modifications of the stands or replacement. Yes, sir.
So we're talking about how much money on that, if we would somehow fail and trigger that?
We don't have that estimate because we were not taking that approach. We are, we were taking an approach of not having to address the stands.
Okay, but let's just say we accidentally triggered it. Is that a half a million or more? Just guess.
To build new stands?
Yes.
Oh, it would be more than a half a million.
Okay, so we're talking about big money if somehow we accidentally triggered that?
Yes. Yes, sir.
But from the, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Dr. Gromen.
No, no, I'm, I'm done. I, I just want us to keep in mind that we, we're, we're really in a, in a tight situation of what, hitting barriers that are very costly. So this is something that all of us need to keep in mind, that we not trigger more expensive things than what we can, we could possibly afford. So, but still, we're, we're not as comfortable as we'd like to be, but we still have some difficult decisions in front of us, and we have people that can help us make wise decisions, including our, our committee.
But I.
I want to, I want to, go ahead, Reverend.
I just want to bring, bring out that as a board, we approved the design as the press box has to be a new press box, which included an elevator that was to be a part of this bond and this package. But again, if, you know, I think we need to be very careful when we consider some, the, the options that I'm sure we're going to have to consider. Thank you, Madam President.
I, I agree with you, Reverend. And I don't, I know we've got, well, this is a lot of information. I agree with you, Reverend. And I don't, I know we've got, well, this is a lot of information uh, to take in, so I'm gonna kind of steer us back. Um, Lisa, do you have more to share with us?
No, I do not.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Leroux, do you have any additional uh, comments?
No, I do not, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Martin?
Yeah, ma'am, thank you, President Fitch.
All right. Um, if the board would allow, I would then uh, like to go ahead and move us into our next item, uh, which is executive session. Is everybody good with that, or anything else we need to cover before we do that?
I'm good with it.
All right, I'm hearing nothing. I'm going to uh, now move us to item four. The board will now conduct an executive closed session to discuss the items posted on our agenda pursuant to the following provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act and as allowed by Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, 551.074, and 551.129. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussions in closed session will take place after the board reconvenes an open session. It is now 3:11. Um, I think it's, uh, for those of you that are joining us being Zoom, I'll say we will, uh, we will reconvene no earlier than 4:00 PM. All right, guys, we'll see you in executive.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, guys, the board is now reconvening into open session at 4:00 PM. The last item on our agenda is to adjourn. Do I hear a motion?
This is Mindy. I move that we adjourn.
Thank you, Mrs. Winslow. Do I have a second?
This is Jen Irvin, I'll second.
Thank you, Reverend Irvin. Any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your time. I greatly appreciate it.
Ms. Fitch?
Yes, sir.
Just wanted to let you guys know some bad news. We won't be able to get our Greenberg turkeys this year.
I heard, I heard that on the news. I was very disappointed about that.
I was, too.
All right.
You have to, yeah.
Way to go, Team of Wine and Superintendent, and we really appreciate you.
All right, see you all next week.
Okay.
Uh-huh, bye-bye.